Actually, we look like we're raring to go, so I think I'll start now. This time, I'm gonna call the October 21st meeting of the Urbana Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. May we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely, and I just wanted to say it's 7:03. Joanne Chester?
Yeah.
Matt Cho? Ashley McLaughlin?
Here.
Adam Rush?
Here.
Nancy Yutman?
Here.
Charles Warrenbrun?
Here.
Harvey Welch?
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have the, excuse me, the minutes of the September 16th, 2020 board meeting reviewed and approved. So take any motions at this time.
I move to approve the minutes from that meeting.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and I believe in the Zoom meetings, we're not doing any voice votes, so can we have a roll call?
Joanne Chester?
Yes.
Matt Cho? I'm sorry. Ashley McLaughlin?
Yes.
Matt Rush?
Yes.
Nancy Yutman?
Yes.
Charles Warrenbrun?
Yes.
And Harvey Welch?
Yes. Those minutes are approved. Are there any communications? Lily? Are there any communications?
No, and I'm looking at the planners, and none of them are jumping up and down, so there are no communications.
Do we have any continued public hearings?
We do not.
All right, then at this time, we will move to the item of new public hearings, and I will call for hearing ZBA 2020 Major-05, a request by Jane and Steve Amundson for a major variance to allow an air conditioning unit to encroach three feet into the required five-foot side yard at 106 East Pennsylvania Avenue in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. So Steve and Jane Amundson requested major variance to allow an air conditioning unit to encroach three feet into the required five-foot side yard at 106 East Pennsylvania Avenue. The applicants have tuned in remotely, and they can answer any questions you have after the staff report. One correction to the staff report, the dimensions of the air conditioning unit are 29 inches by 29 inches. Their staff report shows it as 29 inches by 17 and 1/2 inches, and there is a change late last week. And prior to today's meeting, three communications were received, all in favor of the major variance, and they were included in your staff report. So the applicant seek variance to allow an air conditioning unit to encroach into the required side yard. 106 East Pennsylvania Avenue is located on the north side of Pennsylvania Avenue, between South Broadway Avenue and South Vine Street. The parcel is roughly .3 acres, and the lot is 68 feet wide and 193 feet deep. The house was built in 1956, less than five feet from the east property line, and it was built without air conditioning. Here's the zoning map. The site is Zoned R2, Single Family Residential. The surrounding parcels are Zoned R2 as well. It's up for Blair Park to the south, which is Zone CRE, Conservation, Recreation, Education. And nearby are the Urbana Middle School, the Urbana High School, and Blair Park to the south. Air conditioning units are allowed by right in the R2 zoning district, but they cannot be located in a required side yard. Here's a photo of the house facing north. A major variance is necessary because of the configuration of the lot. The home already encroaches into the required side yard, and there is less than five feet of clearance on the east side of the home. The applicants currently have window air conditioning units, but would like to install whole-house system to better cool their home. The proposed air conditioner will be 29 inches by 29 inches and located across from the neighbor's air conditioning unit. The proposed air conditioning unit will be a newer model, and it is expected to generate less noise than older AC units. And approving the major variance would allow the applicants to install an air conditioner in the required side yard on the east side of the property, two feet from the property line. This photo shows the east side of the house and the general proposed location for the air conditioning unit. The east side is the most practical and cost-effective location for the AC unit. There's a driveway and a garage on the west side of the property, which would make it difficult to put the unit there. There's also a deck in the rear yard, a cache in the house, which makes it difficult, or makes it impractical to locate the unit in the backyard. There is an area set in next to the back porch where the air conditioner could fit. However, it's under a downspout and would complicate any mechanical unit being placed there. Additionally, all electrical connections for the home are on the east side of the house, which makes connecting that air conditioning unit on the east side most practical and cost-effective. This is the west side of the house, and you can see the driveway and the existing garage. And there's not really any good place where the AC unit could fit on this side of the house. Here's the site plan. Toward the bottom of your screen is 106 East Pennsylvania, and toward the top is 108 East Pennsylvania, which is on the east side of the applicant's property. The unit would be 29 inches by 29 inches, and it would be placed as close to the house as possible. To summarize, staff found the case meets all requirements for a major variance. The configuration of the lot and the narrow side yard create a practical difficulty for locating an air conditioning unit. Regardless of where the unit is placed in the east side yard, it would be less than five feet from the property line. The applicants did not deliberately create this situation because the house was built in 1956 with no air conditioning unit and less than five feet from the property line. The unit will not cause a nuisance, as it will be located directly across from the neighbor's AC unit, and it will be the newest available model. It will also be required to comply with the city's noise ordinance, which will further limit any nuisance to the neighbors. The neighbors on the east, north, and south have all submitted letters of recommendation or support for the major variance, and they were included in your packet. Variance represents the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance because the proposed air conditioner will encroach three feet into the required side yard, and the location is most reasonable and cost-effective. The zoning board of appeals has the following options: Forward the major variance requests to city council with a recommendation to approve. Forward the major variance requests to city council with a recommendation to approve with certain terms and conditions, or deny the major variance, and if so, recommend to deny. And if so, articulate the findings for denial. Staff recommends that the zoning board of appeals recommend approval of the major variance to city council under the condition that the air conditioning unit generally conforms to the site plan and exhibit C. And I can take any technical questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Hearing none, thank you, Kat. Is the applicant or anyone on behalf of the applicant here and wishing to be heard?
Yes, Gina Amundson is in the attendee area.
Okay.
Nope, she's just coming online.
All right.
Hi, this is Jane Amundson. Can you hear me?
Yes. I have to swear you in.
Oh, okay. How do you do that?
Well, it's on the honor system, so... We're honoring that you have your right hand raised, and do you promise that any testimony that you give to this board will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
You may proceed.
It's exactly what Catherine was describing. We have hot water heat, so we haven't had air conditioning forever, ever, never. And we decided to go ahead and put in whole-house air conditioning, but there was a big problem with where to place the unit because three sides of our house are very impractical. The only practical side is the east side, and that doesn't meet the zoning... It doesn't have, there's enough space. We don't actually know where the property line is, so it might be, you know, two feet, three feet. We don't actually know how far it is. We kind of suspect that the property line is closer to their house because we think that the garage is probably like over the, you know... Anyway, it's complicated, but we don't know where it is exactly, but it certainly will be within, it won't be the five feet out past the air conditioner because there's not that much space. But our neighbors have no problem with it on any side. And it's, if, to put it anyplace else would cost us a lot more money. We'd have to run electrical wires and pipes through our newly refinished basement ceiling and cut through the new plaster if we tried to go someplace else, so we would like to be able to put it there.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for hearing us.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard in favor of the applicant's petition? Is there anyone opposed to the applicant's petition that wishes to be heard? Hearing none, then are there any further questions from any member of the board to staff? Hearing none, then I believe we're ready to call the question.
I move that we forward the major variance, ZBA 2020 Major-05, to city council with a recommendation to approve the variance as requested based on the findings outlined in this memorandum with the condition that it generally conform to the site plan.
It's been moved. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Now been seconded, is there any further discussion? And I believe we're ready to call this for vote. This must pass by 3/4 majority to be forwarded on to the city council.
Joanne Chester?
Yes.
Ashley McLaughlin?
Yes.
Adam Rush?
Yes.
Nancy Yutman?
Yes.
Charles Warrenbrun?
Yes.
Harvey Welch?
Yes, that motion passes unanimously. So we'll be forwarded to the city council for their consideration at the meeting on?
November 9th.
At the November 9th, 2020, meeting of the Urbana City Council. Thank you. At this time, we are ready to call for hearing our second case for tonight, and that being ZBA 2020-Major-06, a request by Vital Skin Physicians Management LLC, represented by David Line, for a major variance to allow parking to encroach up to 14 feet into the required 15-foot front yard at 1111 West Kenyon Road in the B3 General Business Zoning District. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, you do, and I am going to stop my video so that the presentation is stable. I will see, so there are several attendees from Vital Skin Physician Management in attendance tonight that will be able to answer questions. On behalf of Vital Skin Physician Management, David Line requests a major variance to reduce the minimum front yard from 15 feet to one foot to allow additional parking in front of the building. Section 65 of the zoning ordinance requires a minimum 15-foot front yard in the B3 General Business District. Staff review of the criteria found that four of the six criteria weigh for the request and two criteria weigh against the request because the special circumstances of the parcel are not great enough to require the variance, and because there are alternatives to the proposed parking configuration that would eliminate the need for the variance, staff recommend the zoning board of appeals deny the request. On September 24th, 2020, the Urbana Plan Commission heard Plan Case 2404-SU20, a request by the applicant to allow the operation of a dermatology clinic at this property. The commission forwarded the request to city council with a recommendation to approve the request as requested, allocating approximately 6,000 square feet of clinic space in conformance with the submitted site plan, which is shown on your screen. The clinic space would be in the northeast corner of the building. That is phase three of the current renovations. And this is a little close-up of that section of the building showing the existing parking in front of the building along the two-way access drive. The 9.46-acre parcel lies on the south side of Kenyon Road. There is mature landscaping between the north face of the building and the north parking lot and drive aisle, including mature trees along the northern property line and along the two access drives. So here is the location of the site. It's in a commercial and industrial area, south of I-74. The zoning of the property is general business with more B3 to the east, where Holiday Inn Express is located, as well as other hotels. To the west is Campus Inc. and Peoria Motor Coach and other industrial uses, and to the south is R4 Medium Density Multifamily Residential, which is Illinois, One Illinois North. Future land use of the area of this site, and to the west is light industrial, and to the east is regional business, and to the south is multifamily. Some shots of the existing landscaping, this is looking across the very extensive front lawn towards the building. Those three mature trees here are just north of the property line, so they are actually in the I dot right-of-way, and you can see the mature landscaping on the west side of the building face as well as the east side of the building face. Some additional pictures, here's a little closer in showing the mature landscaping in front of the west side of the front of the building. This is coming in to the parking lot from the east, facing west. And this is a shot looking at the proposed parking lot expansion area. It would go around these two mature front trees. And another shot of the east side of the expansion area. And this is looking at the west side of the access drive. Here is that mature landscaping in front of the building again. The applicant wants to construct an additional 14 parking spaces in front of the building, two more in the existing row of parking, and 12, a new row of 12 spaces along the north property line, avoiding the two mature trees. There's approximately 61 feet between the south side of the parking lot and the northern property line. The current row of 13 parking spaces is 20 feet deep, leaving 41 feet of space between the existing parking spaces and the property line. The proposed configuration includes a 21 and 1/2-foot wide aisle and an 18 and 1/2-foot deep row of parking, and leaving one foot of space between the edge of the parking area and the property line. The applicant wants to provide additional parking that is convenient to the patients at the new dermatology clinic. They state that the available space between the access drive and the north property line does not allow them to construct additional parking without a variance, nor is there enough room to install the additional parking with a landscape buffer that would allow them to encroach up to 10 feet into the required 15-foot front yard without a variance. Although the proposed parking configuration may be the most straightforward, staff does not find that it represents the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance. There are two alternative parking configurations that could be considered, where the option to install a landscape buffer, which would allow parking up to 10 feet into the required yard, would eliminate the need for a variance, or at the very least would reduce the amount of encroachment into the yard. This fact coupled with the fact that there are already 105 parking spaces on a site where only 91 parking spaces are required by the zoning ordinance lead staff to recommend alternatives to the proposed configuration. Staff discussed these alternatives internally and shared the three most feasible options with the applicant. The first one was angling the parking and narrowing the access drive. If both rows of parking were angled rather than 90-degree, the two-way access drive could be converted into a one-way access drive and narrowed. This shows an example of a 60-degree parking module in the zoning ordinance, which totals 55 and 1/2 feet. This would leave 5 and 1/2 feet between the parking and the property line and only be a 9 and 1/2-foot encroachment into the required front yard. The landscape buffer that is permitted to be installed according to the zoning ordinance would allow this encroachment, and it could be installed in the remaining 5 and 1/2 feet. This option appears to provide adequate space for two rows of angled parking, a one-way access drive, and a landscape buffer. No variance would be required with this option. The second option that was explored was parallel parking. A row of parallel parking spaces only 8 and 1/2 feet wide. Parallel parking could be installed on the north side of the access drive, which would leave 11 feet between the edge of parking and the property line. This is more than enough space to install a landscape buffer and would allow the parking without requiring a variance. Either of these options does not require a variance, and the additional 14 spaces on the north side of the building may be desirable, but they are not required. Expanding parking to the west was a third option that was explored, but neither staff nor the applicant wanted to require removing the existing mature landscaping. Moving to the variance criteria. The applicant states that the spectral circumstances in this case are that there is not enough space in front of the building to accommodate both parking and the necessary landscape buffer. Staff have shown that two parking options would satisfy the desire to add parking and not require a variance. Something that could be considered a special circumstance is that the right-of-way at this location is exceptionally wide, extending 110 feet from the center line of Kenyon Road. Further west, this right-of-way extends only 50 feet from the center line. If the right-of-way at the applicant's site was the same as the parcels to the west or were a more standard width, a variance would also not be necessary. However, since there is still sufficient space to add parking and a landscape buffer, despite the exceptionally wide right-of-way, this factor should weigh against the request. Secondly, the applicant would like the future clinic to be easily identifiable and accessible from Kenyon Road and plan to use the north entrance as this clinic entrance. Staff concur that the north entrance and its parking area are the most logical for the dermatology clinic. This factor should weigh in favor of the request. Third criteria is that the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The only main entrance visible from the road is Vital Skin's building, which is set back over 100 feet from the street across a grassy lawn with several mature trees. Adding an additional row of parking to the lot should not significantly alter the view of the building and should not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor should also weigh in favor of the request. The fourth criteria is that the variance would not cause a nuisance to the adjacent properties. Staff have found that adding parking in the proposed location should not increase traffic or noise and should not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. This factor should also weigh in favor of the request. The fifth factor is regarding the minimum deviation criteria. The applicant states the clinic parking must be adjacent to the clinic entrance, the north entrance, as other locations would be inconvenient for patients. They also state that the existing green space and landscaping would negate the benefits that a landscape buffer would provide. Staff has determined, again, that other parking configurations could provide additional parking and that there is sufficient space for both parking and the landscape buffer, eliminating the need for the requested variance. This factor then should weigh against the request. And finally, the variance requested is the result of practical difficulties or particular hardship in carrying out the strict letter of the zoning ordinance. The practical difficulty in carrying out the ordinance is the exceptional width of the right-of-way at this location, plus the location of the existing building. 61 feet is not enough space to meet the applicant's desire to include two rows of 90-degree parking and a two-way access drive without encroaching into the front yard. While staff has shown that other parking configurations may be possible without requiring a variance, the variance request is the result of the aforementioned practical difficulties. This factor should weigh in favor of the request, bringing the score or the tally of four criteria in favor of the request and two criteria against the request. City's legal division has found that the zoning ordinance requires only that the zoning board of appeals consider all six criteria when reviewing the variance request. The request itself is not required to satisfy all six criteria, nor any minimum number of the criteria, nor any one specific criterion. The staff findings are summarized in the staff report. The highlights are that the special circumstance of the site is that space available between the exceptionally wide right-of-way and the front of the building does not leave sufficient room for the desired parking configuration, and that the proposed variance should grant relief from a situation not created by the petitioner and would allow them to create a desirable parking configuration for the medical clinic near the logical building entrance for clinic patients. Finally, the proposed variance is not the minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance as there are other configurations available that would not require the proposed variance. Based on the analysis and findings presented above, staff recommends that the zoning board of appeals deny the major variance request. If the board recommends approval, staff recommends the following condition: That construction must be in general conformance with the attached site plan entitled 1111 West Kenyon Road dated August 25th, 2020. That is the end of the staff report. I'd be glad to answer questions, and I believe David Line and Brian Capel, sorry, are available to answer questions.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Marcus. Are there any questions for staff? Yes, Charles?
Okay. We have the right-of-way. So we're 110 feet from the center line on Kenyon Road. So if their proposal would go through, the edge of the parking lot would be 111 feet from the center line of Kenyon Road? Would that be correct?
Let's see.
Would it be 110 plus the one that was still left?
No, so currently, it's 110 feet from, yes, yes. So the parking lot would still be 111 feet from the center line of Kenyon Road. So the parking lot would still be a hundred and eleven feet from the center line of Kenyon Road.
And you said that IDOT has that right-of-way?
Correct.
What in the world could they possibly do there? Did they acquire that because of the interchange there, or?
I, I have no idea. And that I, that IDOT right-of-way narrows up as you go west and as you go further east, it appears that the property owner, two properties to the east, maybe acquired their portion of the right-of-way that was north of their property. So it doesn't appear that IDOT has anything planned for that, but I can't speak for them. There is a regional stormwater detention area north of West Kenyon Road, but that is not, that does not include any portion south of Kenyon Road.
Is the lot directly north of this buildable?
There is no lot north of this because it is highway right-of-way.
So that's all, it's all IDOT across on the north side of Kenyon Road there?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so. Okay, so we, okay, that's good. Thank you.
Go ahead, Joanne. You have to unmute yourself, Joanne.
It used to be a cloverleaf. There.
Okay, that makes sense.
And that's why I think it's so big.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Has the owner of the property considered buying this land from IDOT? And then he owns it and can do what he wants with it?
I will let Dave Line or Bob Kapelnik or Caleb Capel or Go Cool respond to that.
Well, we really have no need for that property right now.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Line. It's not quite time for you. I'll have to swear you in first. Are there any more questions for staff?
I, I do have questions for staff.
Go ahead, Adam.
With the alternative parking configurations that staff has looked at, would those be the same amount of parking spots that the applicant has requested?
Not necessarily, because I am not an engineer. I don't do AutoCAD and that kind of stuff. But I will show that the parallel parking option does span further along the front of the building, but it is approximately to scale and shows three, six, nine, twelve parking spaces.
I have a question. How many parking spaces are in the area near that north entrance now?
I believe it's fourteen. Let me check. The current row of thirteen parking spaces, eleven standard and two accessible.
And would are those staff and patient spaces or just one or the other?
I, I will leave that for representing. Yes, I will mention that the proposed renovation area of six thousand square feet for the clinic would normally require twenty-four parking spaces for a clinic of that size. Now, there is another ninety spaces to the rear, but it's a, it's a location and geography issue. The rear parking lot is over three hundred feet away from the front entrance. There is currently not a sidewalk connecting the front entrance and the rear parking lot. So that is another item to consider.
Are there any further questions for staff? All right, thank you, Marcus. Mr. Line and anyone else who wants to be heard in favor of the no, that's right, we're doing these one at a time. Mr. Line, I will swear you in first. Do you swear that any testimony you give tonight will be fair and accurate to the best of your belief?
I do.
Thank you, sir. You may proceed.
Well, if I may, I'd like to turn it over to my staff that are assisting me, Bob Kapelnik and Caleb Capel. I think they'd like to explain our rationale for it. If, but I guess before I do that, I could answer the question that Nancy raised, and that is, you know, we, we really don't have any use for the land in front. It's a beautiful lawn, the mature trees. It's a nice setting, but we have no expansion plans right now beyond the footprint of the building that we're occupying and renovating. And so that's why we haven't considered or approached IDOT about purchasing the land. But I'll let Bob and Caleb discuss the parking.
All right, Mr. Kapel, Kapenek, is that my saying that right?
Correct. Yeah, very good.
Do you swear that any testimony you give tonight will be fair and accurate to the best of your belief?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed if you have something you wish to say.
Yes, thanks. First of all, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight, giving up your evening for us. And Marcus, good presentation. Appreciate you putting it all together. When I, when I looked at Marcus's recommendations on the angled parking and the, and the parallel parking, we had discussed that internally amongst the, the design team. And, and I guess the most overriding factor in our desire to, to put the parking in as we've configured it is that all the parking north of the building is going to be patient parking. So we also believe there's going to be patients with mobility issues. We're going to have elderly patients parking there. Our concern, first of all, with the parallel parking is it's just way too tough to navigate that. I, I don't like parallel parking, and it, it puts the patients at a considerable distance from that front door. So we, we didn't want to go that route. And, and if we did also, we're, we're essentially, in my opinion, creating even more of a eyesore by lining cars up along the entire north elevation of the building. So that was kind of a non-starter for us. The angled parking, although I think we could get it to work, the reservations we have with that would be creating the one-way access potentially confusing patients and visitors to the clinic in, in terms of the ingress and egress from that parking lot, as well as the fact that by narrowing the, the aisle, which we would do being one-way, we're, we're really limiting the amount of space between the parked cars. And my concern would be somebody trying to cross that, that, that driveway to get to the building in fourteen and a half feet versus twenty-one feet or twenty-three feet, I believe, would present a hazard. So, so really, our desire to do the, the ninety-degree parking is predicated on what we believe is, is best for the patients. This is not going to be employee parking. It's strictly patient parking. And we believe it's the safest way to navigate into the entrance to the clinic. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have from us, for us.
Does any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Kapel? Hearing done.
I have a question, Harvey.
Go ahead, Ashley.
Um, just quickly, do you have like a some sort of estimate of how many patients you expect to be at one time? Like how, you know, at what capacity you expect that parking lot to be occupied?
I have an idea, but that might be a better question for Dave Line. Dave, can you answer that?
Sure, Bob. We're planning on having fourteen exam rooms. So that would have fourteen, potentially fourteen patients in exam rooms at one time. And then if you've got one visitor or patient waiting for the exam room, so we, we could easily need the, the twenty, whatever, thirteen, fourteen and twelve, twenty-six spots could be occupied entirely by patients.
Is that, is that typical? I mean, I don't know what your current clinic size is.
Well, we're, we're very new in the, in the industry, but there, really, the, the number of exam rooms, you generally have three exam rooms per provider if you're counting physicians and nurse practitioners as providers. So based upon the number of providers that we expect to have in that facility, that's fourteen exam rooms is, is what we believe we need.
I had a question about the
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, Adam.
I had a question about the maintenance of the the yard in the right-of-way. Is that going to be, I understand that it will be owned by IDOT. Is that going to be maintained, though, mode, whatever, by the facility?
Yes, it's been cared for by the National Council of Teachers of English prior to us, and it's being maintained by us now. So, yes.
Okay, but you will be somewhat limited in what you're able to do on it because you don't own it outright, because it's the right-of-way?
Yeah, this is true, but we've maintained, fertilized the lawn. We do the tree trimming. We do all the when branches fall, I mean, we, we take care, we, it's at our nickel to take care of it. It has been for the prior owner and it is for us now.
Charles, go ahead.
Can you hear me here? Yes. So if we were to grant your request, the elevation of their slopes down, so you're going to have to level that off? Is that be correct?
Correct.
And is there you're going to have some sort of, I don't know how to describe it, a barrier on the north side of that once you level it off?
There would, we, we would potentially have to put in a, a small amount of, of retaining wall to build that up. I'd have to leave that. I don't have the civil engineer with us tonight, but obviously it's got to be designed to drain properly and, and not collapse. So it would be designed professionally and, and it would take into account the slope of the existing grade out there.
And would you, would you like to have parking bumpers or things so people
Yes. Yeah, the, the, the design that we have, where we laid the parking lot in plan, does call for, for bumpers at each space.
All right, thank you.
Are there any more questions?
I, I would just say
Go ahead, Nancy.
That I personally, as a driver, prefer angled parking rather than straight in. And I feel over time, your patients could figure out which way, which driveway to go into if you had an entrance and an exit sign. That's just my opinion.
Yes, Joanne.
So if, if the area is going to be built up and you're, because it slopes, are you going to be, have, have some of that build up? If there's only one foot at the end there on the right-of-way?
Not if we were to put a retaining wall in, no. But I, I don't think it's going to be significant because we can use some of the slope and then supplement that with a, it probably wouldn't be more than eight inches tall at the edge of that parking lot. It would be within our property line.
Okay, so then there's just, you only have one foot.
Correct.
On the other side of your retaining wall.
Well, between the edge of the parking lot and where the property line would be, we have a foot. And that's the space we would have to use to do whatever we need to, to construct the parking lot.
Okay.
Any more questions?
I have one more question. I'm sorry, Harvey. This is
Go ahead, Ashley.
My video's off because my connection is poor, but just for clarification, I'm scanning the, the summary report here really quick. If this variance is requested, the parking will go up to a foot of the line. So basically, if it wasn't requested and they encroached on that, on that, oh my gosh, I'm blanking on the word, on that.
Suck back.
So the, the fifteen-foot front yard. Thank you. Then there would have to be land, some sort of buffer. So if we approve the variance, not only are they taking up that entire front yard, but there will not be a buffer? Am I understanding that correctly?
I, I believe, this is Bob Kapelnik. I, I believe that the owner is willing, if we can find a way to do it legally, to put some landscaping on the north end of that parking lot. Problem is, it wouldn't be on our property. So I, I'm not sure how that works. If, if Vital Skin is maintaining that green space and trees now, it seems like they should be able to put it there. But again, that's, that's probably a legal issue, but they are willing to put that in.
Okay. But that is not really, I guess, within our purview. I mean, what we would be approving now is simply the parking, no buffer, because there would not be space for it, is what I understand. Thank you.
Any, any further questions? Any additional comment from the applicant? All right, well, I have to, if you want to say something, I have to swear you in.
That sounds good.
All right, do you swear that any testimony you give tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes, I do.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Capel.
I just wanted to find out in, in the exhibit B, what the neighborhood plan that shows. I did want to just note is that if you look at the property to the east, that Holiday Inn Express, if you look at the Vital Skin parking versus the north end of the Holiday Inn Express parking, we're spoken, you know, it'd be a well from the road than what our neighboring property.
You're, you're breaking up a little bit.
Okay, can you hear me better?
Yes.
I was just mentioning that the Holiday Inn Express parking to the east appears to be right up to their property line as well and our property line. If with the proposed parking variance that we're requesting, would still be further from the road than our neighboring property. Just as, as a comparison to obstruction of views, we'd be less than what our neighboring property would be.
Are there any questions based on these additional comments? Thank you.
Harvey, if you'd like, I could show that exhibit that Mr. Capel was referring to on the screen for people.
Yes, please. Why don't you do that?
So here's Vital Skin. Here's the Holiday Inn Express. Their parking is along the north of the building, but there is also a drive aisle that is further north. And that is roughly another nineteen feet further north than the north property line of the Vital Skin property. And also looking west, you can see that Campus Ink's parking area lines up roughly with where the proposed parking would end up here.
And Marcus, if I can ask just a quick question for clarification, that's because of the, we, we could say oddity of this right-of-way that might be from the former cloverleaf that Ms. Chester talked about?
Correct, correct. And that's a little better shown in the in this. Here you can see where that right-of-way all of a sudden angles to the northwest, narrowing the right-of-way. angles to the northwest, narrowing the right of way for those properties. And here you can see that lot that I mentioned that presumably transferred hands between IDOT, or perhaps if the cloverleaf only extended down here and not up here, I'm not sure. The Holiday Inn Express, I cannot explain why, but their access drive was actually built on IDOT right of way. The city was not involved in that, though.
Thank you for that additional information. Anyone else, any other board member, excuse me, have any other questions? For either staff or the applicant?
I have another question. This is Ashley.
Yes, go ahead, Ashley.
Did we hear, forgive me if I missed it, did we hear if the applicants had approached IDOT about purchasing the right of way? I don't want to speculate what IDOT, you know, used to want to do with it or will want to do with that right of way in the future. I'm just curious if anyone has actually approached them directly.
No, we've not approached IDOT about purchasing the right of way.
Thanks.
Additional questions, comments? Yes, Charles?
For staff, we're not concerned about buffering because there's really nothing, nothing there to buffer, right? Because there's nothing to the north.
Correct.
So that, that's really not a consideration.
Right. And, and there is a hundred and ten feet of grassy lawn even between the parking lot and the road.
Right. Thank you.
Any further questions? Comments? Hearing none. Is there anyone present who wishes to support the applicant? Hearing none, is there anyone present who wishes to be heard in opposition to the application? Hearing none, I believe then we are now to the point where we're ready to call the question.
I move that we forward this case to the city council with a recommendation to approve the variance as requested based on the findings outlined in this memorandum, case ZBA 2020 major dash zero six. With the condition that construction must be in general conformance with the attached site plan entitled 111 West Kenyon Road dated August 25th, 2020, which is Exhibit D, Sheets C1 and C2 in our memorandum.
I'll second that.
Right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this major variance with the conditions outlined by Adam and that we forward it to the city council for their consideration. For this motion to pass, it will require the affirmative votes of four of the six present board members. So can we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Joanne Chester? You have to unmute. Oh, sorry.
Hold on, yes, Charles. Charles, you're muted, Charles.
This has to pass by three quarters, is that right?
Yes.
So that'd make it five.
Five, I'm sorry. You can tell I'm not a math major. Thank you, Charles. It will take the votes of five out of the six present board members, affirmative votes to forward this on. Thank you.
One, yes. One question and clarification, is it, is it three quarters or two thirds majority for a major variance?
I don't have the book here in front of me. I don't know. I thought it was-
The memo says two thirds.
Two thirds. Would that be four, Charles?
That'd be four.
Thank you. All right, we have it clarified now. To forward a major variance onto the city council, it takes four affirmative votes of the board tonight. So can we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Joanne Chester?
Yes.
All right, Ashley McLaughlin?
No.
And Adam Rush?
Yes.
Nancy Uteman?
Yes.
Charles Warrenbrun?
Yes.
And Harvey Walsh?
Yes, that motion carries with the necessary votes to forward it on to the city council for their consideration at their meeting of-
Again, November ninth.
November ninth, 2020. Thank you to the applicants. All right. At this time, we are ready for the consideration of all business, which according to the agenda is a review of the annual bylaws.
That will not be tonight.
Okay. Should, for purposes of the record, is that to be tabled to another meeting?
Yes, that should be tabled maybe to the next meeting.
All right. Well, we'll just table that in general and we'll consider it when the staff believes we are ready for that issue. Do we have any new business? Hearing none, we have no audience for participation.
May I ask, why?
You're muted, Adam.
Sorry, it must not have picked up. May I ask why we're tabling this, why it's not ready?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So I don't, Kevin is, Kevin Garcia, I think, was going to lead that discussion. He's off for vacation right now, so he's not here tonight. So I think, I think it would be a better conversation if Kevin Garcia was here.
Thank you. Yeah, Kevin's great. Okay.
That's a good clarification, Adam. I appreciate that for the record. All right.
Harvey, it looks like we do have someone who wants to, for participation.
Oh, we do? All right. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks for calling on me. I was, I was worried I was going to get skipped there. My name is Christopher Hanson. I live in Urbana. Thanks for serving on the ZBA and doing that work. That's great. Tonight I wanted to speak to you about audience participation itself. I don't know if the ZBA has been paying attention to what has been happening in city council meetings lately. But perhaps you will notice that Jason started the timer at four minutes today. So there have been some changes made to audience participation in Urbana, and those changes fall down from the city council rules to your board. So the new rules, if you're not familiar, allow for content-based speech restrictions on input from the public. And it's been poorly defined and it's quite clearly a violation of the Open Meetings Act, and we've seen this exercised terribly by Mayor Marlin at the September fourteenth city council meeting. So I'm not, I'm not sure if your board was in any way consulted and how you as a board would want to have audience participation done. Or if you were consulted on the new rule set that the council voted on. But I think it, it puts boards and commissions in Urbana at risk and particularly your board where it might benefit you to be able to have, say a back and forth with an audience member if they brought something to your attention and you wanted to have some kind of discussion with them. Well, the new city council speaking rules prohibit the chair from having any kind of dialogue with an audience member during public input. And I, I think your board would benefit from being able to do something like that, but now you're not allowed. You've also, you know, limited public input down to four minutes, which isn't a huge deal, but I mean, you've got a board where you very rarely have public input. And so when someone does come to speak to your board, I seriously doubt that, you know, it serves you any interest to, to limit their time even further. So I'm not sure how you feel about that. So I just wanted to bring that issue to your attention. The, the new rules that have been created by this ordinance are pretty clearly a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And so it puts your board in the untenable position of considering violating Urbana ordinance or considering violating state law. So, and maybe this is something you want to discuss in regards to your annual bylaws and see how you feel about that. But if you're willing to, after I, after I end my input tonight, if you're willing to comment on it at all and tell the public if you were consulted on this, or if you have any particular feelings about it, and if you plan on enforcing those rules, I think that would be, be helpful at least to kind of let people know where you're at. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wish to comment on what has been raised by Mr. Hanson?
Well, I'd like to comment, one, will this be part of the bylaws? And two, can the clock be reset after four minutes? If somebody wants to go beyond four minutes, can they simply reset the clock with approval?
So I think current ZBA bylaws are for five minutes and the chair has the ability to extend or limit that depending on how many people are here and it could go down to three minutes. But the current new rules, I'm not sure how they quite apply to boards and commissions, so I can look into that.
Go ahead, Charles.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Currently, it's my opinion that we let people who are talking to the issue that, that we're talking about talk as long as they're, as they're making sense, let's say. And we've had people talk more than five minutes or 10 minutes. And then after we're done, we have this audience, audience participation at the end of the meeting like where we're at right now, which I believe this might be the first person in 25 years that has utilized this spot to talk to us. And once again, I think somebody needs to talk to the lawyers to tell us what we're supposed to be doing. Because we are, I guess we call us a quasi-legal body. So once again, legal advice here would be good from somebody.
Thank you. I, I'd like to say the same thing. If staff could please do an inquiry on this and find out what our obligations are in regards to the city council's rules versus our own bylaws, as well as how much autonomy we have to be able to allow the speaking that we want in our, in our meetings. I'd like to know that kind of latitude.
Yeah, absolutely.
This four minutes, is that strictly directed at audience participation or is that applicants and those against and for applications? Do you know, Lilly?
I think it's for general public input.
I see. Because I think Charles is right. I'm not sure we've ever really restricted people from speaking as much as they want to. We've had meetings that have gone for hours because of our willingness to let everybody who wants to be heard, be heard. Yes, Adam.
I was going to say, I believe that these are special rules that are being enacted for the online meetings. So when we, when we, when the emergency order is lifted and we return to having in-person meetings, my understanding is that we would presumably revert back to the traditional meeting set. I did notice that this revised agenda includes the new, the new public input guidelines that the city council adopted. So that to me implies that the city council, city staff has, or the city council has directed that this be applied to our board. But it would be nice to have that clarification to know if it is.
Yeah, it says it so on the document for cities, boards and commissions in official meetings. But I, I would like to check in and get more specific advice from our legal staff for you.
Thank you. I think we all appreciate that. Anyone else? Yes, Nancy.
When is our next meeting scheduled? Do you have the next meeting date and will there be any cases that you know of?
I believe that's November fourth. I can try seeing if we have anything planned for that.
Lilly, it is November 18th, and as of right now, I think we have a conditional use permit case and potentially another case, but that is all I know of at the moment.
So November 18th would be the next meeting.
Thank you so much, Kat.
Yes, Charles.
While we're at it here, is it now our policy that you're not going to send out any of these cases in the mail anymore? The written documents and things that you used to send us, you haven't sent it now for two, two meetings?
That's a very good question for Terry and Dell. But if you're specific, if you're saying you specifically want a paper meeting, I can send that message along to Terry and Dell. We can make sure that she get one.
Well, I've always wanted one. I thought everybody always got one unless they opted out.
As far as I know, the boards and commissions are not receiving paper packets, but I'm sure if you requested one, Terry would be able to get it to you.
Well, my only point is, is I can read the, I can read the beginnings, but when you start looking at site plans and things like that, it seems so much better to me to have something in my hand. But, all right, so I should take it up with Terry?
Yeah, yes, I think Terry is the packet meister, really, can really help with that.
All right, thank you.
Any more comments? All right, is there a staff report or have we kind of bled into that?
There is no staff report.
All right, study session?
No study session.
All right, thank you. I, I believe that includes the business of the meeting tonight, so I will move to adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you, Lilly, Marcus, Kat, and the UP TV staff. Were you guys taking care of us?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everybody. Have an amazing night.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.